I call this Finance Committee meeting the order on this Wednesday, December 5th. I will call it 5:02 PM. Uh, Rose Call.
Mr. Mays?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Garrett?
Present.
Ms. Fields?
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Present.
Mr. Winfrey?
Present.
Scalloway? Mr. Griggs?
Present.
Ms. Worthing?
Alright, so we got a point. This gentleman threw me a pen to see if he can do it. He might want to replace this one. Uh... Before we get to the agenda, I would like to ask if there are any changes or amendments to the agenda. Let's start putting that on the Finance Committee Agenda at the first after Rose Call. Any changes or additions to the Agenda? Mr. President?
Uh, not just the Finance Chair, I mean not just Finance, but all of them.
You requesting that procedural order on the Agenda on all Committee Agendas? Uh, I've got a change and addition to the Agenda that I want to put before the Special Order. That's going to be with our staff. Um, Davina, um, so I'm going to put Davina as it relates to a discussion. I know as it relates to a resolution item, 1-8-0-6-1-3, the biennial budget. So, we're going to put that before Special Order. If there's no objections, is there any objections to that? Other than that, um, if anybody from the Treasurer's Office here, the County Treasurer's Office?
I can represent, but no.
You going to talk about it?
County Treasurer's Office.
County Treasurer. I asked that they be here. I talked to the land bank, they called me. So, let's keep our ear open and eye open, everybody, for anybody from the County Treasurer's Office. I was going to move that around a little bit, but other than that, for right now, we go back and do it. No other Agenda changes. Um, Mr. Moon, how you do? Alright, um... With no objections, I would so order that change. And then, we would now proceed. Um, Davina, is something you want us to know about that resolution?
Right, um, I have spoken to Ms. Wheeler, the City Attorney, and she did agree with what I had noticed about the resolution. So, she is bringing an amendment, and I have spoken to Mr. Newsome as well. But basically, 1-8-0-6-1-3 speaks to having a public hearing. This is the new Charter section that says that the budget shall be presented twice a year. And that section that speaks to the December one says that on the first Monday in December, the mayor shall submit a budget to council. What should have happened is, we should have scheduled a special council meeting on that first Monday. And she could have done a presentation and then kind of scheduled that hearing. But she did present it on that day, or submitted on that day, I should say. It is this resolution. But that section of the Charter also speaks to having a hearing after the budget is presented to council. Normally, the mayor would do a budget presentation, we have a special meeting where she actually does a presentation. This Charter speaks to a presentation. So, after that presentation, the Charter says, no more than, no sooner than 10, no later than 20 days, you have to have a hearing. The resolution says that that hearing would happen after formal adoption of the resolution. But the section of the Charter doesn't speak to that, it only says after the presentation. So, my concern was that if you didn't have, if you didn't schedule the hearing until after you adopted the resolution on Monday, you would have to have a hearing on December 21st, that Friday, or the day after Christmas, 26th, 27th, or 28th. Otherwise, you're going to miss this deadline. The 10th day would be that Thursday, so you couldn't have it before that Thursday. And the 30th, or the 20th day would be New Year's Eve. So, with that being said, I suggested that the presentation happen today, because that section of the Charter only speaks to her doing the presentation, and then you can schedule the hearing. Doesn't say anything about adopting a resolution, it just says, like normal, she does a presentation, you have a hearing. So, if you have the hearing today, I can schedule the hearing, or sorry, if you have the presentation today, I can schedule that hearing for the 18th, where you already have a meeting. Otherwise, you will have to have a meeting during the Christmas holiday.
Um, let me say this, can you get a copy of that section of the Charter between now and the next 10, 15 minutes and give it to the council people?
Yes.
I want to see that section of the Charter. And then, I would say this, I got a call from Mr. Newsome earlier this week. And so, um, when we try to enact this new Charter and do things timely, I can't speak for y'all, but I don't think we're going to go to death if we don't. So, I'm glad that you caught that. We're going to try to conform as we learn this new Charter. I appreciate you and Angela and Mr. Newsome and Ms. Brown. And so, whatever you recommend after I read it, because you know y'all interpret stuff sometimes different than council folks. So, I want the council to read it. You say you're going to leave about what time?
I'll leave by 6:00.
Okay, so, if you can get that to us now, then we'll stick with it before you leave and then reach a decision.
Okay.
Madam, um, Winfrey Carter has something.
No, no, I'm fine.
Go ahead, what was your question?
I wanted to acknowledge someone.
Um, Mr. Newsome, you have something?
To you.
Word goes through her, she ain't concerned right now.
No, I was going to say, he's prepared to present.
Okay.
Before I present, I do want to make something perfectly clear now. If you read the Charter, Section 7 of the Charter, this is not in place of the presentation that we do in spring. This is in addition to it. So, I want just to make that clear, that the new Charter says that we have to do two public hearings. We have to do two proposed budgets, one preliminary budget and one a final budget. So, it adds a preliminary budget here in December, and then the formal, final formal proposed budget in March. And as I told you, councilmen, and I do appreciate and respect the work of the committee, of the Charter Committee, uh, as well.
I'm trying to get a little off of, you know...
But this was...
Quincy here, so I ain't going to say nothing.
But this, I will say, and you know, I'm going to put it on the record, that this is one of the proposed Charter amendments that I'm going to push hard for us to remove this particular milestone. The reason is, is because it's very difficult functionally for finance to come right out of audit and then go right into a budget. This budget literally is the same budget. The second year, the biennial budget shifted back a year, and then the first projection shifted back a year. Because we have not had time to sit down with the department budgets for them to complete their budgets, for them to even submit their budgets. We don't have revenue projections. So, I am prepared to kind of go through these numbers at a high level as part of a presentation. But I want to make that clear.
And I'm not going to do the presentation now. We're going to get back on to the agenda. We'll hit that presentation at that time, because I'm going to prioritize some business here today, particularly with this AE Com thing. And so, um, Quincy, I don't think the Charter revision commission meant any harm. But I think that's going to be one that's going to be looked at and then we'll debate it. But I know, um, that the intent was for good fiscal responsibility, and so we'll see what happens. Um, I'm going to hope you kind of, you know, work with us on these amendments, all Charter stands amendments. Davina?
I just want to say, the City Attorney did just give me the amended, um, resolution, which takes out that language about adopting the resolution before you can have the hearing, and just adds, um, the presentation language. Um, I will say...
So, where is the amended resolution?
Right now, I'm going to go make copies.
Do we all have it?
Not yet. She just handed it to me. I'm going to go make copies and make copies of that section. But the clerk, I did speak to her, Angela, um, the language wherever it says, um, well, this is... Well, now, this is changed to adopting a budget. Um, she wanted to be accepting. And so, in the language, she just wants to make sure that the council accepts, or she wants it to say received. So, the clerk wants it to say, because you've received, you're not approving it, you're not saying you're agreed with it or anything. You're just saying you've got it.
So, you got what you need?
So, yeah, but this needs to be a little bit further.
When you get, when you getting ready?
I won't be here. I might not be here. I might not be here, so I'm just going to point that out and I'll highlight it on yours.
So, you ain't got to come back before?
Nope. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to highlight your copy and make sure that you amend it to say received.
Okay, when you come back, if you need to, we're going to just stop and let you in if no action. If it is, we'll try to do it anyway if we get to go. But other than that, um, y'all get that together and we're going to keep moving. Ms. Fields, you had to, and if you was talking about that fan and the heat now?
It's very warm in here. I wanted a window open. I was like, this is giving us more air in it, so.
It's hot air.
Well, y'all want it off?
Yes.
Miss, you can get that off.
Wait a minute, guys. I mean, it's too much news.
Okay.
He got the window open.
Yeah, just crack it.
We'll see what happens. Okay, look, I'm going to ask that 1-8-0-4-2-0 be Special Order Master P schedule. I'm going to ask that that be postponed and kept on for two weeks without any objections, any objections. So, order. Moving down to the resolutions, the first resolution is 1-8-0-5-8-3, AE Com. Um, I want to lay a little foundation if I may. This is a 1.1 million dollar contract, um, moving forward. We got all the players I think we need in the room, and, um, you know, at the end of the day, we're going to see if this moves to council, moves to Special Affairs, if it, um, rejects it or accepts it. And, um, what I want to do, starting out, because I've heard conversation about a 5.5 million dollar contract. In fact, that was, I think, the amount of the contract. And so, who is here from AE Com who can enlighten this council on, um, these services we got for 5.5 million? And I know there are some presentations, I got a call about setting up the screen, but if y'all work with me, I'm going to try to get us through this and everybody get their say. Um, is it you, Mr. Moss?
Mr. Chairman, who would be me? But I have my colleagues here to answer.
Okay, um, Ms. Fields, did you have something?
Yes, a point of information, actually, is, um, Dr. Schwartz here?
Who is Dr. Schwartz? Is Dr. Schwartz, is that the person from the university?
He's from U of M.
Yeah, I'm familiar. When he come in at about 5:30, they'll call it to my attention. I'm familiar with that. And we'll see the relevance of that, but I'll entertain some of that.
My question is, he is going to be here?
My answer is about 5:30, somebody of that nature, I've been notified, might come in. Mr. Moss?
Yes, sir.
Um, can you give us a brief overview of the type of services that AE Com provided for, um, 5.5 million? You want to join us? Sure, if somebody else wants to speak?
If you would, we prepared a slide presentation. Is this fine with you?
If it's okay with you, Mr. Chair, if they have a slide presentation.
Okay, well, I do what they like, but that's what's relevant about it. And I'm going to be really particular on time, because I want...
We're going to be very short, sir. My slides are only 10 slides.
Now, you know I'm rude, I, 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 in a...
I understand.
Go ahead, Ms. Fields.
I know you're rude.
I want to move to suspend the five-minute rule only for this item about the AE Com.
But right now, you've made a motion, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, my thing is, it's a motion on the floor to suspend the five-minute rule. Council people, if y'all know what that is, is there a second? Ms. Worthing, um, you want to sit here? You are comfortable there. You want a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so I got to keep my peripheral vision going. I got a council prayer on this. So, it's been moved and properly seconded to suspend, as we call it, the five-minute rule.
Just for this item.
Any discussion? Mr. Davis?
No, unless we're going to suspend it for whatever discussion necessary, deemed necessary by any other council member.
That's your position?
That's my position.
Mr. Davis, we're law and no vote unless it's changed. So, is that a substitute motion, Mr. Davis?
Yes, it is.
So, is, I'm understanding the substitute motion to be, um, you want the five-minute rule suspended for other council business as well?
Yes, or another council member with our priority, yes.
Um, is there a second? Is there a second? I support his motion. So, you got a substitute motion on the floor, any discussion on the substitute motion to suspend the five-minute rule as it relates to other council business? Um, is there a problem?
Was there a second?
Yeah, I second it. I second Mr. Davis' substitute motion. It was a second. I hesitated.
Amendmentary inquiry, can the Chair second the motion?
I have done it, and I'm a rule that I can, and we're going to keep moving, because I am a council person. And when I don't see some other people seconding it, I will second. Is there a problem?
If there's a problem with you supporting the motion, I'll support that.
Right now, I don't see a problem. Is there any discussion on the substitute motion? I don't hear any appeals, so with I'm a rule, we moving forward. Mr. Davis, discussion on the substitute motion?
Yes, because I might be doing something very important to me that I might want more inquiry on.
Okay, let's see how the substitute motion go. I'll be supporting it. Um, I think that we can't pick and choose what's important on the five-minute rule. You out of chair, we're going to probably do some wonders with that rule, Mr. Garrett. Um, Ms. Fields?
I think we most certainly can pick and choose on what we want that five-minute rule.
Um, and that's fine, so that'll be two discussions. I'll have my second one to say behind you, uh, we can pick and choose, but as a group. And so, I watched the majority and minority votes when it has come up before. This one has come up, looks like we can win the substitute motion, looks like we might can win or lose. So, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of the substitute motion, signify by saying aye or raise your hand. Uh, okay, all opposed to substitute motion? One, two, three, four, the motion fails. Now, the original motion. Let's see, is there any further discussion on the original motion to suspend the five-minute rule? I'll say this, what's good for the goose is good for the ganny. And it's going to be bad to try to handle business under five-minute rule. I'm going to stick with you, Mr. Davis, I'm going to vote no. And if this motion fail, that's not good. We'll figure out what to do from there. But I'm that type of politician on some of these rules that shouldn't have been there in the first place. Any more discussion on the original motion? I'm going to restate the original motion to suspend the five-minute rule for this discussion only. Um, any more discussion?
I have something to say. I'm not going to support, um, this motion, simply because AE Com has been before us, or maybe, um, a couple of weeks ago, during the investigative hearing, okay? And I think all of the questions that we have, or had for AE Com, we already got those. We already got those answers. So, I'm not going to support the motion.
Interesting. Ms. Worthing?
I didn't get my questions answered, and I have quite a few. Uh, also, we were silenced by the Chair, so I would like this opportunity to ask as many questions as I'd like. Uh, AE Com, this is another million dollars. It's a big deal.
Um, Ms. Fields?
I was also a council person at a hearing that was not allowed to ask questions, so I... And many things have happened subsequent to that, so I have many questions I want to ask, and I'm fully prepared, as usual, with research and documents to reference, um, for my questions.
Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think it's really unfortunate how other people think they got priority over other members of this body. Uh, as Councilwoman Carter stated, we went thoroughly with AE Com in a hearing, but some of our colleagues was not there. I don't know the reason. But I might have some questions in another part of this committee that I won't answer, but I'm going to have privy to get because of whatever the case may be.
Mr. Garrett, did you have something? Well, I do have something, and then, if there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. I heard said in this public arena that the chairperson wouldn't allow folks to vote. Guess who the chairperson, I mean, the top, guess who the chairperson was? Me, Councilman Mays. Guess what I do? I try to allow everybody to talk, particularly if and when they're there. Now, Ms. Worthing and Ms. Fields, then missed the last two hearings. AE Com came up, swore in seven people. Ms. Fields, the fact of the matter is, you wanted to make statements and ask questions during their opening presentation, which I said was like a quick inquiry, like a point of information. And then, you went to calling me names in the press, and then a press conference happened. Those are the facts, so I'm not static in some of this, what's being said, but I am static and taking care of city business. The hearing is still going on. Two of them has been missed by the people who want to kind of control and deal with this today. Two of them. The next one is the 12th. Let's see if you're there. I spoke last week about people ordering tons of information individually and trying to conduct and do their own thing. I encourage council persons to do their own thing. But when we set up a special proceeding specifically for that, do that. Don't try to change. Now, let me say this, I'm going to already counted these votes, and the swing vote going live with the President. Yep, they're sitting right at you, the swing vote, on how this going pass or fail, because I'm hearing what Carter, Winfrey Carter is saying, I'm hearing what Mr. Davis is saying, and I'm hearing what I'm saying. I mean, this motion going to go to move it to the floor, to Special Affairs, to postpone it or deny it. I'm going to be leaning toward approving. And all of these questions and details on this 1.5 million, I'm going to still have a lot to say on keeping the priority of the business on track, no matter how many minutes you got. So, this is my position. I would say for right now, we're going to keep it at five. If folks who normally don't want more than five, who made the rules for five, if they've got some up, I'll keep it at five, and then later on in the meet, we can reconsider. That's my position. So, I'm going to vote no on the motion. I'm going to try to proceed with AE Com and others on relevant business. And then, what I'll do, I'll review this later if the motion fails, because I'm an advocate of more than five, but I'm not an advocate of more than five when folks are saying bad things about me and this council, and they missing an action. Everybody know what the motion is to suspend the five-minute rule? Everybody got their own decisions made, let's call for the vote. All in favor of this motion to suspend the rule, signify by saying aye and or raise your hand.
Aye.
Now, all opposed? Any abstentions? The motion fails four to four, so let's proceed. Mr. Moss, the floor is yours.
Mr. Mays, can you make him identify themselves, please?
Yeah, Mr. Moss, can you identify yourself? Miranda, identify yourself for the record. Help me out, Janelle?
My name is Joseph G. Moss, Jr. I am a Senior Vice President of AE Com. My responsibility is direction of strategy development in business for the water business line globally. Uh, with me today, I have my colleague, I have a number of my colleagues. I have Patrick Clifford, Vice President of the Midwest. He is responsible for everything that happens in the Midwest, which Michigan Falls. Uh, Mr. Ed Thorp, uh, who is here as our Program Manager. Uh, I think I have, oh, I have Mike Winegar, Senior Vice President of Design and Construction. Thank you very much.
Is there one more?
Miranda Rutledge. She's here on the Fast 14.
Miranda Rutledge? Rutledge, okay, thank you.
Pardon my diction. Mr. Chairman, thank you and to this distinguished body. Uh, thank you for giving us the opportunity to come here this afternoon and speak to you.
Before you get too deep into it, Mr. Moss, I really want you to tolerate the way we don't try to do this, because we got a lot of business, and I'm going to really try to keep it moving. Proceed.
Um, again, I say thank you very much. Uh, I start with my opening slides. I think one of the most impressive items that I bring to you is, this city hired AE Com as the Program Manager. And what I want to do is go through a couple of points and what that means. But with this first slide season, you have it in front of you, our major programs that we have conducted over the last five years. When you talk about cost and talk about capital expenditures, those projects represent in excess of $300 billion that we've overseen in the last five years. Thank you.
You talking about nationwide?
Just within North America. I did not show you our global map. I'm just talking about North America. When I, if you would, Miranda. I'm sorry, the screen is a little bit... I think there are three elements that I want to talk about. First and foremost, what our scope of services are.
Okay, look, hold on. This meeting, I wonder, should it even be in here? Should we be out there? So, I'm going to be looking at that. Proceed.
The second proponent is our program, the status and the results. And the third, and the third is what we're here today to talk about, the contract extension. Sir, if you look, this is... This is, I'm sorry. When we came and competed in January, pardon me, in December 18th of 2017, the RFP that we competed for spoke to Program Management Services. Mr. Chair, can you hear me, sir?
I'm here.
Oh, okay, thank you. And when you look at that, so back to this slide. When you look at the services, we competed on RFP for three years, from 2017 that would include in 2020. That was the RFP that we asked, we were asked to compete. There were seven tasks and seven projects. We gave you the opportunity to look at RFP, we competed against other firms, and we were selected to negotiate. When we negotiated in 2017, December 2017, you look to the right, that was what was asked for in the RFP. This is what we negotiated for 13 months. Still, some Program Managed Services, however, there were other elements that was removed. Hence, that's where we are today. Next slide, please. What I, what I'd like to tell you is, when you talk about what we've done and those elements that we negotiated, there are probably four attempts. One is, we were asked to bring project funding and secure funding for about $80 million. Those projects were out... Those projects were outlined, we did that. The number two was, this is what everyone talks about, which is a major tenant, is exploration of at least 6,000 lead service lines. Number three, which we were hired to do was program management, as well as these other components and public relations support. And number four, complete the 30% design of those projects that we were asked to go and secure plan. Next, please. When we talk about excavation, what we were told to do as baseline by the Concerned Pastors Consent decree program, we looked at 6,000 excavations in this year. We'll talk about that, as well as meeting 18,000 excavations by January 2020. Let me show you my report card right now. Right now, when you look at this, when you look at this, this subtotal shows from the beginning to last till 2016, 8,833 excavations. What we did this year, we did 9,480 excavations. All right, that's why the mayor talked yesterday about a total of 18,313 excavations. That's where we are. That's where we are today. Miranda. When you look at, when you, give me the whole slide, Miranda. When you look at what we've done, everyone always asks, well, what have you guys done? We completed the project plan, which was the $80 million. We had 9,480 excavations, November 30th. And I understand, Sam, can you tell me how many excavations we have going on right now?
Hold up, come on in, Sam. And he's referring to Sam Cox, because I want all of these folks identified on the record, Mr. Cox.
Mr. Cox.
Identify yourself and how you associated with this.
Yes, my name is Samuel Cox. I'm the president of Arco Systems. We do all field inspections, along with a couple other companies. As of since November 30th through yesterday, we've done 500 homes.
So that's 500 on top of this 9,480.
And let me say this. Could I call some of them folks over? I want, come on in, some of these folks.
Well, can you give me one moment?
Well, the reason I'm doing it, Mr. Moss, is because we voted on this contracting service on the front end. We should have known what y'all were doing. This is a review for some of us. So believe me, we got a vote to do. If we vote five and move it forward, we, so when it comes to spending time and getting stuff done, let me talk to council people, and I'll let you continue as well. Ms. Fields.
Point of information.
Yeah.
As this gentleman gives his presentation, are you speaking of the contract that council approved? Or some other arrangement?
No, ma'am, I'm talking to you.
Was there ever any arrangement?
I don't understand what you mean by that.
Excuse me, was there ever any change? Change of scope, change of contract, any amendment, anything?
No, ma'am, that's not how we do business.
So that's the contract we're referring to. And Arco has, to the council, has these different people out in the field. What is it, about 30 of them?
Thirty, sixty.
And they do a lot of stuff with tablets and taking pictures and logging information. Steve, did we bring the doc slide?
It's on the website. I can get it.
Okay, so I'm proceeding, Mr. Moss.
Arco was part of our team to help us with construction management services.
I understand. You self-contract out.
That's correct.
I understand. I want everybody to understand. Keep moving.
And what I did in doing that, since you give me a moment, what I tried to make sure is most of my subconsultants in the work was done with local Flint residents.
I'm gonna get to that. Look at him. I ain't saying nothing yet. I'm gonna get to that. Proceed.
And so what I show you is all of the components. This is, this bar here shows the components of the program management. This shows in terms of the contractors being the contractors doing the excavation, as well as doing the replacement of lead service. We approve their invoices and keep them moving. That is part of our construction management service. We say, you asked me about any task out of scope. We show you that this, we perform a lot of things that we have not, in fact, negotiated in terms of out of scope negotiations. That is what we're coming to you today about. Next slide, please. This is something else I brought to you. When I came and I looked at this program, and we looked at 36 months, and we looked at what that program would dictate, I brought an economic model to you, and I said, what I would do is I would put local people to work. I said, I also would improve not only the quality of life, but also I would impact taxes as well as revenue to this city. That's what I said I'd do. What we have done today, out of 116 people that have worked on my program, in the program for AECom, 60 of them are Flint residents. And what I said to you, and some of them are in the room today, and I say thank you, we from AECom say thank you, and you've done a great job for us, but more important than that, I've put a million dollars into this community in less than 12 months. My next slide, please. This is what we come to talk to you about today. An extension of service line replacement project, change order modified services.
Oh, extension of services for lead service lines?
Replacement projects.
Extension of services for lead service, okay.
Change order of the modified services that we performed this year.
Give an example or two.
Can you give me an example?
Mr. Darby, this is Mr.?
This is Ed Thorp.
Ed Thorp. Darby is a council. Longin Darby is a council.
Yes, sir.
Ed is right. Last name Thorp.
Yes, sir.
As part of what we have done, there have been numerous changes in procedures that were required by the NRDC since the contract was first signed in December 2017.
Can you repeat that again?
Since the contract was signed in December 2017, NRDC, National Resources and Defense Council, has made numerous requirements, changes of things that needed to be done, specifically related to recording, the way filter flushing, or the way flushing the lines would happen, the way the filter checks would need to be done. There are just a number of things that had to be modified in the overall program in order to be in compliance with what the NRDC was requiring.
And the NRDC is in that Concerned Pastors lawsuit, and we got a consent agreement, but those changes and brought-ups that we arguing over some of them now still, you know, I'm gonna find out later, was they consented to, was they court ordered or whatever. Proceed, Mr.?
I also have the responses, as Ed talked to you about it, NRDC and Michigan Department of Environmental Quality. And lastly, what we've been also been doing is helping the city of Flint in all of their reports. When we competed for this program, that was not an issue. That was not a concern. That was not a scope request. So we've been helping the city of Flint and putting our staff and bringing other staff in to help do that. And lastly, we've prepared.
That's the type of stuff that the state was volunteering to bring stuff. People in NADA couldn't understand why the city say we think we got this. It was all kind of folks helping. Remember, Mr. Newsom, the state wanted to bring some folks in at a certain crucial time. Proceed, Mr.?
And lastly, we're preparing, we're in negotiation and preparing year number two, which will be 2019, the program's scope, and how we will, in fact, bring, basically, complete all of the lead service lines before the end of 2019. That's what we're doing. Last slide, please, Miranda. And so what I say to you right now is thank you, and we stand ready for any questions that you may have.
I'm sure you have time coming your way. Mr. Green.
Yes, sir.
Of this 1.1 million, I suppose most of it is on the first item, extension of services.
I would think so, Patrick.
Yes, Miranda.
And what, do you know what that price is?
In terms of line item?
No, no, just extension of services for lead service lines.
If you asked me how we broke that down, we've given that to your CFO.
If it's not in your package, I could get to you.
Okay, now, what precipitated this? Is this when we, we had a hydro backing? Is that what it is?
Ed, help me with that. Patrick, help me with that, please.
The extension of services is required because our contract was for 6,000 lead service line excavation. We're currently at the number of 9,300, right? So we've essentially exceeded the goal by, what's the math?
Forty percent, that's about forty percent.
That's the additional money required.
Just going fashion.
More efficient is the term I'd like us to use.
More efficient.
What was your question, Mr. Green?
Where is most of this money, most of the 1.1 million? I think it's going into the extension of services.
The extension of services, and that was defined as to what?
Well, it was defined as the contract required 6,000 lead service line excavations, and we provided over 9,300.
Right, and there's a difference between the excavations and the actual change out of lead and galvanized. And Mr. Thorp, who is the Mr. Thorp? Because we got another guy in the room with us. He's a U of M guy. Mr. Thorp, you got some background in predictive modeling? Or you don't?
I have used modeling, but the predictability modeling that is being talked about, give me a little bit. I should give a model. It's not something that I have, I agree you will experience it.
But we got the man in the room who do. And eventually, we'll hear from him. But if it's only relevant to council people making decisions, we welcome you. We'll hear from you.
Point of information.
You don't need a point of information. You got the floor.
No, I don't want the floor. I want in my five.
And we ain't, I got no motion on the floor, Ms. Fields. See, if you want to argue with me about rules, you gonna lose. Let me say this. Hold up. Now you ain't got the floor. I got it. I gave you the floor. You don't have to do a point of information. It's not messing with your five minutes, because there ain't no motion on the floor. So proceed.
I want to thank the people who are here. Thank them for all their hard work, but I wonder if they could now leave the room, since Janelle can't even see to identify who's speaking.
Ms. Fields, if that's what you want to know, I'm gonna say this. We'll help Janelle identify. This is a public meeting. They welcome if you want to move out to the outside. So everybody who's still out in the auditorium can hear, we'll entertain that. But right now, if Janelle say something loud, I'm gonna hear it, and I'm gonna correct it. She's the keeper of the record. So if that was the point of information, I'm gonna get back on track. Look, AECom, in my opinion, should also be managing restoration. They only been managing lead service line replacement. Restoration is on its own. Goyet got a lead service line replacement contract, and they got a restoration. And anybody really looking at that. I'm looking at it. So I'm all in favor of broadening the scope and doing what need to be done for the best interest of the citizens of the city of Flint. I'm telling you, Mr. Newsom, I know you was glad they was here with reporting and five million dollar company. Big company came in in the middle of an emergency. But I can go on and on, but I'm this type of chair. Mr. President?
Mr. Chair, for the benefit of those that are in here standing, and those that are out there, I would make a motion that we move this meeting out on the floor, so everybody can have.
Uh-huh, you in discussion. You got a motion?
Yes, sir.
You made it?
I just made it.
And so the motion I understood is to move this meeting to the bigger chambers. Is there support or second? Mr. Davis?
Mr. Cass.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Any other public got something to say? Mr.?
Yeah, I asked Mr. Moss if he had any other.
Slide presentation.
There are none, so for the benefit of everybody.
Well, I got one I want people to see before they leave, and I'll get to it. It's them docs that's showing all the work's been done. Mr. Branch is working on that. Mr. Mrs. Fields?
I'm just wondering how long it will take Janelle to set up again out there?
About 10 minutes.
10 minutes? How are people scheduled looking for 10 minutes with them lives, let Janelle say? Any objections? Mr. Mo, any objections? Any objections? All right, all in favor of moving? Well, if we don't get that out there, they done did their presentation. But before we leave from in here, I want to see if you can flash it up there for a visual. Can it be flashed now?
Yeah.
Okay, let's flash. You got something to flash too?
I could.
Okay, we'll flash it. But we gonna move after these flashes, if there's no objection to the outside. So the outside people can be organized as while we flash. Y'all ready to vote? All in favor of giving the people more room? Uh, that wasn't a motion. Moving to the outside. I was editorial. Moving to the outside. Raise your hand or signify by saying aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? So can we flash, Mr. Branch? And can we flash? Should I call you professor? You are professor.
Yes, sir.
Professor Schwartz. Let's do the flashes and then pick back up out there. I think these flashes is worth seeing. You got something you want to flash, Mr. Wood? Okay, the first thing we gonna look at is I want y'all to see the records that hadn't been kept by the city for years, that this program fast start now is getting us some more permanent detailed records. This was a big issue in the water prices. See, Santina, do I look old? Don't answer that, Mr. Garrett. I'm gonna say this. But I've been around a little while, so I think that this is something you need to see. Ms. Fields?
I really think that if you're going to be showing predictability models, and we have that discussion, we need to be able to see that. I would like to know why we can't move this projector and screen out there as well.
Well, maybe we can, and we'll work on that. But are we on now with these quick flashes? Once we move, we'll be working on that too, like an octopus. So I want to see these two quick flashes. And remember, when he flashed, Ms. Fields, if you got something to say, I'm not that hardline, but I ain't gonna go all day in this room, and I want others to see. So, you know, we got time. And remember, we got hearings going on. So I think that Zara in the M Live is kind of pushing some of this story, because she writes about everything and find out stuff that I don't know, so I'm proud of her. I look at the. So IT gonna come move the predictor. Ms. Fields?
I just want to note that essentially going to bring them up here, and since council will have some time, I would like to hand around, this is Professor Schwartz's declaration in the Concerned Pastors.
Alrighty.
You might want to reference this.
You want to give the clerk a copy? We would receive this without objection. Do we need it there here?
No, I just.
Okay. Now, this is what I want council to see. President Winfrey, if he missed it, I want y'all to tell him. There he is. Newsom want to be the council president. Look at him, he's 10. You don't, because we don't make a lot of money. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Branch.
All right, on the city's website, the fast start replacement program. Information is out there, they have stats every week, but also a map. This is phase one through four. This shows all the work that was done in phases out there. It can be expanded, it can be zoned in. Each gap represents a home that was done. Here's four of seven. There was some, any word you want to look at is there. All these are the records of homes that were done in phases one through four. I look back, I can look at phase five. I look back, I can look at base five. All the red dots and blue dots indicates work that was done in two thousand and eighteen. There's a lot of conversation about, particularly in Ward five, that no work was being done in Ward five. In Ward five, all those red dots represents, no focus real, sorry. Those are individual residents. If you click on any one of these dots, it's gonna tell you what was done. So on that house, thirteen twenty-two Mason Street, they did a partial public portion of service line. This information has been out there for two years. These records now are going into our permanent records for the city in fact, so we'll know the composition of these lead service lines.
Now, can you, you say, you talked about the color, the red one is the service line replacement completed.
This one is just two thousand and eighteen.
Two thousand and eighteen. Okay, but you showed me copper before red save, whether or not a service line was completed or whether it was copper to copper, have you shown that? Okay, but then them colors showed it. Can you got that map? Did you show it to me? That map right there. And so. Do everybody on the council, Mister Greig, can you see that? And what it does is telling you, um, the public portion was replaced. If it's green, both sides, the public and the private side was replaced. And you know what we mean by public and private side? If it's going to the house or on the street. And then it also say no service lines was replaced on the private portion. If it's yellow or gold and then blue, no service line replacement necessary, copper to copper. So I think that's what we started this venture out because had we had these records in the past, it would've saved us a lot of digging, a lot of time. So I'm trying to tie some things in. Mister Professor, Mister Professor, are you ready to flash?
I'd rather just present than flash, sir.
Well, you might rather to present than flash, but not in this meeting. I said flash, you said prevent, you ain't got no votes.
I got it, sir.
I ain't even entertaining the motion. Right now, I'm gonna let you flash. If you choose not to flash and present, don't even get started, we finna go out there. So you flashing or presenting?
I'd like to flash, sir.
Well, you as a professor, I see it, I see it. Now, if you get on my good side and this council overruled me, you can present. They can put a motion on the floor anytime. Right now, I'm hoping to flash. You feel it, let me move that. See, Professor Schwartz, I've invited you to a hearing. I've invited you to a hearing, so.
Thank you for that.
This ain't your original.
Mister Chair, can we move first, this room is so hot.
You wanna move and let him do that outside?
I got it ready.
Okay, give him about two, three minutes and then we gonna let him flash and he'll present at a later.
Try to stall again. For the person getting relieved, we got two moments with us.
So he's saying he got it, let's indulge. Oh, Janelle?
Tom is here to take the projector and move it.
Okay, are you ready to do it?
Yes, he is.
Okay, so if you don't flash in the next minute or two, it's about time. If you don't flash in the next minute or two, you gonna miss the flashing opportunity. You gonna end up being a presenter your first time out. You ready?
You're sitting in front of the projector.
That light ain't on, on the projector. On this projector.
You're right in front of where the projector is.
No, but the light ain't even on, now the light is on. Mister Phil, foot on the floor.
Mister Phil, you got the.
It's coming up.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for having me, Mister President.
I'd like to know who's speaking.
Identify yourself.
My name is Eric Schwartz. I'm a professor at the University of Michigan, the Raw School of Business. My background is a data analyst. I do data science and predictive modeling. Thank you, members of council, for having me here. First, I'm just here to just discuss some of the work that I've done over the past two and a half years.
We're here to flash up a diagram, give us a brief overview and you gonna present later.
Yes, sir. Right here, what I have is a map. It has all the information that Mister Branch just showed on the publicly available maps that have been on the city of Flint website. And I commend AECom and the city for posting that information. I just wanna show some more information that we also have. The information that's been publicly available is every home that has been excavated, either through hydroback or traditional excavation, whether it had a replacement or not. As you all know, not all homes have been visited through excavation of any form. And so for the homes that have not yet been excavated, what we can do is give a best guess and a prediction of whether a home has lead or galvanized or whether it has copper. And so what I've done for each of those, my colleagues Jacob Abernathy and others and I at the University of Michigan and Georgia Tech have put together a model that produces those probabilities. What you're seeing here are green for extremely low chance of lead or galvanized, which means copper, and that might be confirmed copper, just as the copper that the previous map was shown, or very likely copper. If you would like me to zoom in on any particular street, I can do that, Mister Council.
No, go down, go up here, go down, go down, cause this is a area with brown and green. So this is copper in the road. And this is Dupont, that's first ward stuff. So my thing is when we do in the first ward, in this case, the brown is high predictability.
The, uh, the red?
This color, this color, whatever it is.
Yeah, so the, the water green?
High predictability, not just in central, it's a lot of brown, but this is high predictability as well.
That's right, sir.
Mister Chair.
Madam, Phil.
I would just suggest, you know, one thing that's helpful, even though we vote on things for the whole city, we all want to see our own wards, is at some point in time, if you can do an overlay that shows where the ward boundaries are, it'd be helpful.
Sure thing.
Okay, so have we flashed? Do you feel like you presenting a flash? I promise you, you gonna be a presenter, this is the flash. Get ready to be a real presenter, maybe out there, but you done flashed. Y'all ready to move to the outside, Mister Greig?
Just one quick question, is it, I think it's safe to say, the red markings are the newer homes?
Uh, the red markings are likely lead or galvanized or confirmed, already verified to be lead or galvanized. In all likelihood, the red are older on average than the green copper.
Green is copper.
That's good, David.
Can you zoom that back out like you had?
Yes, sir.
I got one question. Okay, I could see you make a look right there, that's fine. Now, I'm looking at all the civic park from here, I know the shape of civic park school, I was a commissioner over there. Just as I stated on meeting earlier, I was concerned when they were saying the fifth ward, when I'm looking at nothing but, let me just show you, absolutely, Councilman. All of that is where my ward is, everything over there is red. Now, people should be running over each, but it's a poor neighborhood. And I'm wondering, is this gonna get the type of, I won't say replacement or analysis, because at the same time, Professor, it's a major demo going over there by landowners. Hard as hit fun, they demo and they shrinking the neighborhood with disturbing all of that lead and they doing asbestos remover, baiting old houses and everything. But all of the poor folks is right in that neighborhood. It should be people running over each other from west all the way, all of that just solid red. And it's a historic civic park neighborhood.
Professor Schwartz, see my right hand?
Yes, sir.
Is raised up. I promise and swear, you gonna do a presentation. This meeting is fixing to move out to the chambers and then we'll pick up. It might be today.
I have answers for you.